This is gavel to gavel, WCVW-TV's complete coverage of the Richmond City Council. And good evening once again, I'm Dick Harmon. Welcome to our first and only meeting here in the month of December. That's provided they pass one paper tonight, which has never failed yet. That's to do away with a meeting that would have been, actually not on the 24th, but would have been moved to the 26th. Because the 24th and 25th, the city hall has been, all city offices are being closed for the holiday, but anyway, they decided to do away with the second meeting of the month. There will be a special meeting next week at 12:30, but that's only going to be for one paper for the Redskins, and that will be it. So, what have we got tonight? Okay, we have 19 items on the consent agenda, two on the regular agenda, no appointments or reappointments, so let's get started and see what we've got and what changes will be made. Item number one, ordinance 2012-200, that's a special use permit. That one is being continued till our next regularly scheduled meeting on the 14th of January with our new council at that time. Item number two, ordinance 2012-209, this is concerning unlawful nuisances for the purpose of declaring certain unsanitary or unsafe conditions to be nuisances, and prohibiting persons who own or occupy property from allowing such nuisances to exist on such property. That will stay on consent agenda. Item three, ordinance 2012-210, and this authorizes the CAO to accept $39,960 from the Institute of Museum and Library Services, and to appropriate the increase of the fiscal year of 2012-2013 special fund budget. That will increase estimated revenues and amount appropriated to the library by that amount. That'll be for providing summer programs to reduce summer learning loss. Item number four, ordinance 2012-211, that one, another special use, that is being continued until the 14th of January. Item five, now that one may or may not be continued. Now, Councilmember Tyler said he needs to speak with the fire department because they did not know about this paper, and they may or may not continue it. But anyhow, this would be erecting all way stop signs and all way flashing red lights at the intersection of North Nansaman and Cassington Avenues to replace the existing traffic regulations at that intersection. So that one, still kind of up in the air, we don't know exactly which. Now, item six and seven are basically companion papers. Item six, ordinance 2012-221, and this declares a public necessity for and to authorize acquisition of 1801 Commerce Road for the purpose of housing the Department of Public Utilities Water and Wastewater Plant Lab Operations, Stormwater Operations and Wastewater Collections and Field Operations. And then item number seven is one that basically transfers the money to pay for it. So, what item six does is it authorizes acquisition of 1801 Commerce Road, and item number seven, to basically simplify it, this transfers the money to buy that particular property. Okay, item number eight, ordinance 2012-224, this extends $33,600 from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, and a transfer 8,400 in matching funds from the fiscal year general fund budget. It all boils down to $42,000 to the Department of Fire and Emergency for the purpose of procuring dual sensor smoke detectors for installation in homes in Richmond. And at the informal meeting, Councilmember Trammell wanted to make sure, she said, in other words, they'll continue to have free smoke alarms, and yes, that's what will happen. That stays on consent. Item number nine, this accepts $176,765 from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, and it appropriates the increase to the fiscal year stormwater utility budget, and this is a federal grant for the purpose of demonstrating how city and community partners can implement new approaches, new ways to restore urban habitats that benefit water quality, et cetera. And that stays on consent. Item 10, ordinance 2012-227, and this executes a grant contract between the city and Richmond 2015, Inc. This is for making a gift of a half million dollars to Richmond 215, Inc. to defray a portion of the cost of operating the 2015 Union Cyclists International Road World Championships that will be held in 2015. This stays on consent agenda. Now, then we get to items 11 and 12. Again, these are management facilities for the city public schools. Item 11, which is ordinance 2012-228, this is the one that provides the money, transfers $2.7 million. And item number 12 is one that authorizes them to buy the property. It's a 7.9 acre portion of property of 1501 Commerce Road. That's for the purpose of housing facility management services for Richmond Public Schools. Then we get to item number 13, ordinance 2012-230, and this declares surplus and directed the conveyance of property located at 5800 Patterson Avenue. This is basically the amendment that was agreed to at the last meeting. So this is just doing the official, going through the motions of rubber stamping and confirming that, yeah, that was what they talked about, what they passed. Okay, item 14, this is also one that may be continued. This is Resolution 2012-R140, and this is concerning the written program outline and budget with projected outcomes for middle school Renaissance program. And there was some question by Councilman Hilbert on whether this is going to be for 150 students total, or 150 students from each school. He wanted some clarification on that, so there is a possibility they may decide to hold that one off until the special meeting next Monday. We will not, to my knowledge, not be televising that, it's only going to be a short meeting to talk about possibly this paper and the one Redskin paper that has actually already been approved, agreed to, but have to go through the formal approval method. Item number 15, declaring surplus and authorizing the CAO to seek bids for the property of 5800 Patterson Avenue, that has been withdrawn because that paper was kind of moot now because the 5800 block in school is going to be part of that Redskins package. Item 16, Resolution 2012-R147, this endorses the priorities for the city for the legislative proposals set forth in the document VA CSB Services and Budget Priorities, and requests the Richmond delegation to the General Assembly to take legislative action consistent with and in vigorous support of those priorities. Item 17, directing the Green City Commission, this one's being, going to be amended and continued till 14th of January. Item 18, Resolution 2012-R150, and this concerns the establishment of the Community Policy and Management Team for the purpose of providing for the requirement that certain members file statements of economic interest, and that will stay on consent. Item 19, and this one comes up every year usually, and I doubt you'll find anybody wanting to vote against this one, this is Resolution Number 2012-R152, dispensing with the December 26th regularly scheduled meeting of city councils. So, that will more than likely be approved, and that will mean we are going to be at the only meeting for December. Now, we get to the regular agenda, and we've got ordinance 2012-29, special use at 122 Thamesford Lane, that's being continued until January 14th. And item 21, ordinance 2012-168, special use at 2501 Monument Avenue, that one's being amended and continued until the 14th of January, which will be our next regularly scheduled meeting. So where do we end up? Okay, on the consent agenda, as near as I can tell right now, because there may be some changes made. Consent agenda, two items continued, one amended and continued, one withdrawn, one possibly continued till the December 17th special meeting, and one item pending. Regular agenda, one continued, one amended and continued. Regular agenda ends up with no items to vote on, and the consent with 13 items to vote on. Then we have three papers under expedited consideration, and these have to do with councilmembers who are leaving office, and it basically terminates the services of their council liaison for the city of Richmond. So, as you know, we have one that still has not been decided, there's going to be an official recount of the first district between Councilman Tyler and Jonathan Bellisle, so we'll find out how that one goes as we go along. But that recount is scheduled, last I heard, for the 19th of December. Now, awards and presentations, we have quite a few tonight. City of Richmond will get a Virginia Municipal League Green Government Platinum Award. Then we have Ms. Adrienne Bridget Carrington Walker recognizing a city employee for personal success as a contestant on the ABC Vocalist TV Competition Duets. Then Dr. Leonard Levy Edlow to recognize and thank him for his contributions to our community. Major, Mr. Major Harris III, who passed away on November 10th, to remember the life, music, and memory of Mr. Major Harris upon his passing on Saturday, November 10th. Mr. Brian White and Father Charles G. O'Leary Richmond Community Service Award for a combined community service project that purchases, prepares, and delivers Thanksgiving baskets. And Virginia Commonwealth University Department of Emergency Medicine for successful work on a recently completed medical research study regarding alternative treatments for ongoing acute seizures, et cetera. And that, they will all be presented tonight. We did have Richmond Hill, on the occasion of its 25th anniversary, received an award previous to this meeting. Citizens Comment Period, four people signed up tonight. We've got one talking about concerns with irresponsible dog owners, one concerned about noises coming from an area of establishment, one talking about employee benefits and potential savings, and one with words of appreciation for the council members. And that's the way it looks tonight. How long will it take? Who knows? We never know until we get started and then get finished, so it's anybody's guess how long we'll be here tonight, but we will be seeing some new faces at the next Richmond regular council meeting. As you know, council president, Graziano, has said she will not run for council president, she's going to step down. We know that Councilmember Jewell and Councilwoman Connor will not be back. Councilman Tyler, that's kind of up in the air right now, so we'll find out more as we go along toward next year. We'll be getting started in just a couple of minutes. I'm Dick Harmon, stay tuned.
I ask council members to take their seats, please. Where's the mayor? I believe. Ladies and gentlemen, the meeting will now come to order. At this time, we will stand and the invocation will be given by the Reverend Carolyn Moore McLean, pastor of the Pearl of Great Price Ministries, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Let us pray. Almighty and holy Father, before we consider a resolution, pass an ordinance on making an appointment tonight, we first want to take this opportunity to say, "Thank you, Lord." We realize that without you, Father, the business of this great city could not be conducted. Now grant us the courage, wisdom, and foresight to provide for the need of all our people and to fulfill our obligation in this community. Help us to realize the purpose and plan for the city of Richmond. We ask that you continue to keep us in your perfect peace and your perfect will. In your solemn name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance... Mr. Clark, would you please read the chamber emergency evacuation plan announcement?
Yes, Madam President. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the formal City Council meeting. I'm going to now take a few minutes to go over the council evacuation announcements. Upon activation of the emergency alarm signal, all persons should immediately exit the building. Please use the exits to the left or right front of the council chambers or the east or west stairwells outside the rear doors of the chamber. Do not use the elevator or the escalators. After exiting the building, proceed to the assembly area located in the parking lot voted by Clay, 8th and 9th Street. Citizens and employees should assist visually and hearing impaired visitors with exiting the building. Madam President, I will also take a minute or two to read a statement about the citizens' speakers' rules in the city council chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Citizens wishing to speak during public hearing or citizen comment periods are generally allowed three minutes to speak. Persons appearing before council are not allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, use language of a personal nature which insults or demeans any person, including comments directed at public officials or staff members that are not related to their official duties. Address or question staff members directly. All questions are to be directed to the president of council. Failure to adhere to the guidelines may result in speakers forfeiting any remaining time and further disciplinary actions as necessary, which could include barring from attendance at future meetings of the city council for a period of six months.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Madam President, I believe all council members are present except for Mr. Hilbert. Is Mr. Hilbert here?
That right now is absent.
Okay, and I would also like to recognize Mayor Jones, who is present.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. This time I'll do the awards and presentations.
Okay, we have a joint, official joint recognition going to Ms. Bridget Carrington, presented by the mayor and members of city council. This award is to recognize Ms. Carrington for her personal success as contestant on the ABC Artist TV competition program, "Duettes." Ms. Carrington appeared in nine episodes, which included a live performance with internationally known, nine-time Grammy Award winner singer-songwriter John Legend.
We want to take this opportunity to congratulate you for being such a wonderful poster child for the city of Richmond and bringing such great attention to our brand. We had the opportunity to see you, and you have such a supportive family out there. If nobody else is proud, they are proud, and they're here tonight to show that. I believe that I attended a viewing with the family at Hippodrome, and the place was just packed. So thank you for being such a wonderful talent in our city, and we look to the skies and the wind that John Legend has just begun.
Yes.
So thank you so much, and congratulations.
Thank you.
And I also want to congratulate all of our city employees and stars, perhaps or superstars.
Thank you.
And we just, I just, on behalf of council, I want to congratulate you and wish you the best of luck with your new career that you're working on.
Yes.
And I hope we don't have to lose you in one respect, but if you do, good luck to you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I would just like to thank everybody for showing me so much support, such a great and a blessed opportunity to share the stage with some of the biggest names in the industry from Jennifer Nettles, Kelly Clarkson, Robin Thicke, to be invited to John Legend's home for his Fourth of July barbecue and to meet Stevie Wonder. I mean, who gets to do that? So it's just amazing opportunity, getting feedback from him still to this day for my music. I'm releasing a single tomorrow, it's called "Fall Off." It'll be on iTunes, CD Baby, and Amazon. And I also have a performance at the Hippodrome this Saturday at 6:00 with the Lyric Ave. So anybody wants to come out? You can get your tickets on thelyricaveshow.com. Oh, can my family please stand? I have my dad, my mom, my sister, my aunts here. And representing the Department of Finance, I have my supervisor Valerie Weatherless, Ardella Bolin, and also the boss, Mr. Bill Willer. So thank you all so much, I appreciate it, and thank you.
Next, we have the Virginia Municipal League Green Government Platinum Award.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, Madam President, members of the council. Joe Lurch with the Virginia Municipal League, and I'm very pleased to be here tonight to present the Go Green certificate to the city of Richmond this year at the platinum level, which is the highest level. And I think, Mr. Mayor, you'll remember four years ago, we were at a luncheon up here on the fifth floor with some other members of council where you were given a short speech about the initiatives that the city was to embark on, on sustainability. And I remember you opened it up to questions from the employees, and I think at one point after about the fifth question and then somebody handing you a 20-page proposal on switching, you know, the fuel fleet to natural gas, you whispered over to Alicia Zakoff, you said, "I had no idea," and she said, "You ain't seen nothing yet." And I think Alicia was right, and I really think under the leadership of this administration and participation from the council, you are to be applauded for reaching the platinum level this year for the Green Government Challenge. So congratulations.
I just want to say that we really appreciate this award from VML, and when I first became mayor and we got the silver, I said, "We will not stop until we get the platinum." And so we're delighted to receive the platinum tonight. We're very proud of all of our green initiatives, our green initiative plan. We're proud to have had the opportunity to hire the first person, full-time person, to do green initiatives, Alicia Zakoff, our compressed natural gas buses, all of the good things that we've done to make sure that we are a green city. Our new fire station is gold LEED certified, our schools are LEED certified, and so we're on track, and this is just the beginning. So thank you so much for this award.
And I also just want to thank you for the award and just say to everybody, Richmond is on the move, watch us go.
Next, we have an official recognition award to Dr. Leonard Levi Etlow, presented by Ms. Newbill. Honorable members of city council, do hereby officially recognize, honor, and celebrate Dr. Etlow. An orphan of his father's Etlow Professional Pharmacy in Virginia in 1974, Dr. Etlow earned his BS in pharmacy from Howard University, a master's of divinity from Virginia Union University, and a doctor of pharmacy from the University of Florida. Serving as the CEO and pharmacist of Etlow's Professional Pharmacy, Dr. Etlow is also the pastor of the New Hope Fellowship in Gloucester, Virginia. Elected as a member of the American Pharmacists Association Foundation Board of Directors in 2012, Dr. Etlow has served as an executive in residence at the Longwood University School of Business and Economics and holds clinical appointments at three colleges of pharmacy. A dedicated professional, Dr. Etlow has served on a number of local, regional, and national boards and organizations, and writes articles and presents on topics that include economics, health, and pharmacy. In addition to his many works and endeavors, Dr. Etlow also hosts a weekly radio show on WCLM AM in Richmond. Now therefore, Richmond City Council does hereby officially recognize, honor, and celebrate Dr. Etlow and thank him for his contributions to our community in helping to make Richmond work as an even better place to live, visit, and raise a family.
Thank you. Dr. Etlow, it's my absolute pleasure to just say thank you on behalf of certainly the residents of the East End community, but certainly the city of Richmond in general. You have built your work on a legacy that began with your father back in 1945, and you can continue that work and that commitment, and it was hard work, and I know that, but you expanded the business not just in the East End, but certainly on the South Side and at Bon's Accords. And I know there were days that folks came in and didn't have enough money to purchase their medicine, and you made the difference in the lives of people throughout our community and our city, and we just want to say thank you for that legacy of commitment and of service to the entire city of Richmond. And so on behalf of certainly city council, I thank you, but certainly on behalf of those in the East End who will miss coming into the building and running in and checking, "Hey, Dr. Etlow, how are you?" We just want to say thank you. Thank you so much.
I just want to add my congratulations, Dr. Etlow, and to thank you not only for Etlow's pharmacy, but for your activism in the city of Richmond. You've been a strong voice for social change in the entire city, and we really do appreciate that. 25th Street is not going to be the same with you not being there, and so we really appreciate the days and the years that you have put into making Richmond a better place to live. And I look back there and I see your wife, and I see that I put you together very well because you're still together.
Thank you again, Dr. Etlow.
Mayor and President and Vice President of Council, Councilperson Newbill and the rest of members of council, and then the people of Richmond, I just want to say thank you. It's good to be able to come down here and receive an award. I had quite a reputation when we were across the street in the old city hall trying to get things straight for model cities, but I just say thank you. My father was an orphan, and he was able to go to pharmacy school and then come here to Richmond, and as I would say so many times, as I also preach on Sunday morning, use what God gives you, because I think we had the smallest pharmacy in the whole country. And like I said, it was hot in the summer and cold in the winter, which meant the heat and the air conditioning didn't work well, but we worked with that, and because of everyday people, love, and just being proud to have a person that looked like them, that they could come in and have their prescriptions, it just meant so much, and it kept me going even though many times I was ready to say, "This is it." And even though I won't be dealing with the pharmaceutical product anymore because health of this city, this community, this whole state, and in fact, the whole country, means so much to me, I will continue to find ways to improve health, if just on the radio show, but I know with other groups as they call on me to make presentations all over this area because we spend too much on healthcare and don't get the results we should get, and it all comes from a lack of knowledge. And so that's going to be my goal in the years that God gives me, to just make people know why they're sick and why they're taking all this medicine, and maybe we can save a few lives and save a few dollars. But again, thank you so much.
Madam President, as Dr. Etlow goes to his seat, I just want to add that he also is a minister of the cloth, and he never misses an opportunity to teach. I learned so much listening to his radio program. We urge you to tune him in, WCLM Radio. I suspect he ain't going away at all. This man has been serving all his life on boards and commissions, but he's such a teacher, and we thank you for your wisdom and your guidance all these years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jewel.
Next, we have an award of honor and remembrance for Mr. Major Harris III, presented by Councilwoman Newbill. This is to remember the life, music, and memory of Mr. Major Harris III upon his passing on Saturday, November the 10th, 2012. This remembrance award is going to be presented to Myra Hardy. Is Myra Hardy available? The honorable members of Richmond City Council do hereby officially recognize, honor, and celebrate, and remember the life, music, and memory of Mr. Major Harris III upon his passing on September, on November the 10th, 2012. Born in Richmond, Virginia on February the 9th, 1947, Mr. Major Harris III rose to fame and is known internationally as a singer and a member for a time in the early 1970s of the soul musical group, the Delphonics. Leaving to pursue a solo career, Mr. Harris went on to record and release a number of songs, which include the hit single "Love Won't Let Me Wait" in 1975. A dedicated musician, Mr. Harris III continued his singing career over the years and last performed in 2011 at a reunion show with some members of the Delphonics. Now therefore, Richmond City Council does hereby recognize, honor, celebrate, and remember the life, music, and memory of Mr. Major Harris III upon his passing on Saturday, November the 10th, 2012, on the behalf of the entire community.
Thank you. As you heard earlier, the city of Richmond is home to some extraordinary musical talent, and we would be remiss if we did not take the opportunity to stop and recognize the passing of one of those legends in his own right, and it is just an absolute honor and pleasure to be able to present this award, to recognize one of Richmond's own, born and raised in Jackson Ward, and just a talent known not just in our city and in our Commonwealth, but throughout the world, and we just wanted to take time to recognize and appreciate his incredible contribution. And I think Mr. Jewel will probably remember this song. There may be a few of us will have to dig in our archives, "Love Won't Let Me Wait," but I think Mr. Jewel has that one. But certainly, hopefully, generations of now will look back and remember this extraordinary talent, our own son, Mr. Major Harris. Thank you.
First of all, as in the words of Mr. Harris, he would say, "May all praises be to God, because without God he would not have gotten where he is today, and I would not be accepting this." I would like to accept this in his honor, because I know he's up there looking down right now with a smile, that infamous smile from one ear to the other, to know that he is being so honored by his home. He loved his home in Richmond, he spoke of it all the time. He always said, "Without here," this is where his roots were, this is where he started from. He could not have gotten anywhere else without starting here first. So again, I would like to thank you. I'm honored, because I know he is honored, to know that his hometown is loved and thought so much of him. Thank you again.
Thank you. I do want to recognize in the audience, a member of the John Mells, another legendary group, Mr. Little Tommy, if you would stand, please. We just have wonderful, we could almost have a little concert here this evening, right? Okay, well, maybe not this evening.
This is his oldest and dearest friend, and this is where one of the roots that he was entangled with growing up and starting his career, and they both are out here, and he's still out here singing.
Well, thank you, and I know Mr. Jewel again will remember just a little bit of soap from the John Mells, and so the next generations will dig in the archives, but thank you so very much, and congratulations to you, ma'am, as well.
The next award is the Community Service Award, presented by Ms. Newbill, to Mr. Brian White. The honorable members of Richmond City Council do hereby officially recognize, honor, and celebrate Mr. Brian White. A dedicated leader in his community for the past three years, Mr. White has provided vital support and assistance to families on the behalf... vital support and assistance to families on the behalf of a combined community service project that purchases, prepares, and delivers Thanksgiving baskets of food for those in need throughout the Richmond East End 6th District. During this time, Mr. White has personally helped to sponsor and deliver nearly 100 welcome baskets to appreciative households. In America, public government and community services are considered to be among the most noble and important work that a person can do, and through his leadership and actions, Mr. White has proven his dedication to the support of the principles and creed written in the founding documents of our great nation, in that our individual destinies and that of our families, communities, cities, state, and country include not only the aspirations of our federal constitutional republic, but the support of all its citizens in realizing the fulfillment of its promises. Now therefore, Richmond City Council does hereby officially recognize, honor, and celebrate Mr. White for his outstanding leadership, dedication, and service on behalf of families living in the Richmond East End 6th District, and thank him for helping to make Richmond work an even better place to live and raise a family.
Thank you. Richmond has a lot of unsung heroes, and Mr. White is one of them. The next set of gentlemen who've come up are also among them, but I just really wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you. It's been three years. Time has really flown, and I think one of our schools says it best, and so I'm just going to read what they said. For the last three years, Mr. White has contributed his finances to help purchase Thanksgiving baskets, and then we have gone door-to-door to deliver them without fanfare, without any notice, but just with much appreciation and being able to, you know, feel a great sense of gratitude for certainly being able to help and assist families. And this Tuesday prior to Thanksgiving, we dropped off baskets at all five of the elementary schools in the East End, and then three of the public housing developments. And so, this letter, I think, says it much better than I. This is from one of our elementary schools, who says, "On behalf of the students, faculty, and staff of Schimborazo Elementary School, we would like to thank you for the generous donation of Thanksgiving baskets to Schimborazo's families. The Thanksgiving baskets enabled our families in need to celebrate a joyous Thanksgiving holiday. Together, we can work to alleviate hunger, which will enable our students to focus on their academic success. We thank you for your tremendous generosity and commitment to our families. Schimborazo would be greatly honored by your continued partnership with our schools. Thank you so very much."
Sure, I was not prepared to say anything, but I'm very, very humbled. Thank you. We have been very fortunate to have some success in our business in Ms. Newbill's district, and we've been developing housing in the district for about 15 years, but we wanted to do something to recognize that the members of our neighborhood were not as fortunate as we, and it's been a very rewarding experience the last few years, and I thank you for working with us. Thank you.
We have another Community Service Award, presented by Ms. Newbill, to Father Charles G. O'Leary Knights of Columbus Council, 6457 of Holy Rosary Catholic Church. The Honorable Members of Richmond City Council do hereby officially recognize, honor, and celebrate the dedicated members of the Father Charles G. O'Leary Knights of Columbus Council, 6457 of Holy Rosary Catholic Church in Richmond, Virginia. Known for delivering a great many programs and services to the community for the past three years, the Father Charles G. O'Leary Knights of Columbus Council, 6457 of Holy Rosary Catholic Church has provided vital leadership, support, and assistance to families on behalf of a combined community service project that purchases, prepares, and delivers Thanksgiving baskets of food for those in need throughout the Richmond East End 6th District. During this time, Father Charles G. O'Leary Knights of Columbus Council, 6457 of Holy Rosary Catholic Church has helped to sponsor and deliver nearly 100 welcome baskets to appreciative households. Now therefore, Richmond City Council does hereby recognize, honor, and celebrate the Father Charles G. O'Leary Knights of Columbus Council, 6457 of Holy Rosary Catholic Church for its leadership, dedication, and service on behalf of families living in the Richmond East End 6th District, and thank his members, partners, and supporters for their continuing commitment to helping make Richmond an even better place to live, visit, and raise a family.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Sam Patterson to come forward, as he's also a member of the organization. And gentlemen, I can't say thank you enough. When I looked at the pictures from this year, I said, "Well, wow, these are some incredible gentlemen, Brian, all of yourselves, as we were out delivering." And I simply want to just say thank you. You heard the letter from the school, one of the five that we delivered to, and certainly you were there when we went door-to-door delivering to families. I cannot thank you enough, and on behalf of the families that we were able to serve, and I thank you for three years of dedicated service in our community and to this effort, and look forward to next year. Okay, we're ready, can refer next year, just, okay, put you on notice. But it has been an absolute pleasure, gentlemen. Thank you so very much for your continued service. If you would like.
Madam Counselor, I'll speak on behalf of the gentleman standing before you. It's one of their missions to support the community regardless of efforts in food, family, finances. One of their main missions is to get out and be known in the community. I want to thank you on that behalf.
Thank you. And we also managed to have a little fun and tell jokes as we are out, you know, trying to load the vehicle, and the boxes are missing, you know, the bottoms and things drop out. But gentlemen, thank you so very, very much. Brian, Sam, all of you, thank you.
Next, we have an Official Recognition Award, presented by Mr. Jewell, to the Virginia Commonwealth University Department of Emergency Medicine. The Honorable Members of Richmond City Council do hereby officially recognize Virginia Commonwealth University Department of Emergency Medicine for its successful work on a recently completed medical research study, considered one of the finest emergency medicine clinical research facilities in the country. The Virginia Commonwealth University Department of Emergency Medicine took on a national leadership role as part of a five-year research study designed to develop an alternative treatment for ongoing acute seizures. Health risks for many Americans, the Richmond Ambulance Authority treats 1,000 seizure patients each year, and 100 out of those have continuous seizures and need immediate treatment to stop them. Sponsored by the United States of America Department of Health and Human Services National Institute of Health, the study named the Rapid Anticonvulsant Medication Prior to Arrival Trial Study, was part of the clinical research conducted by the Neurological Emergencies Treatment Trial Network of 18 leading medical centers in the United States that are working together to develop better treatment for neurological emergencies that includes seizures. Assistance with the study locally include the Richmond Ambulance Authority and Enrico Doctors Hospital Retreatment Campus. A tremendous, successful study, the results were published in February 16, 2012, issue of the New England Journal of Medicine, and indicated implications of changing the national standards of care regarding the treatment of seizures patients. Now therefore, Richmond City Council does hereby officially recognize, honor, and celebrate the VCU Department of Emergency Medicine for its work on a recently completed medical research study regarding alternative treatments for ongoing acute seizures, and bring this to the attention of all Richmond residents.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, members of council. I'm privileged to have witnessed what this guy brought to us from, what, three years ago? This clinical trial, research project, that, you know, when I was a boy, maybe 10 years old, I saw my first seizure right in front of me, and I didn't know what I was looking at. And this poor woman, girl, was just writhing in the floor at school, and somebody said, "Well, she's having a seizure, get a spoon." I'm going, "What? Ham sandwich, you gonna do with a spoon? This woman's dying." Well, you had to keep her from swallowing her tongue, and that essentially was the treatment for seizures back then. What these folk did in this clinical research was come up with a way in which you could do anti-seizure transmission of medicine quicker than the normal way we normally do this. Dr. Ornato is our clinical specialist with the Richmond Ambulance Authority. We have one of the best ambulance authorities in this country because of the guidance of our clinical director, who does nothing but look for ways to shorten the delivery of treatment to emergency patients. And this was one of them. I was intrigued when I saw it. I'm now amazed to see the result. Dr. Ornato serves, not only serves us, he always serves us with such pride in Richmond, and we're blessed to have him, and thank you, and God bless him.
Thank you so much, sir. Well, just a few words, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, City Council members, and particularly my friend and colleague Marty, it's really, truly a privilege for anyone in the healthcare professions to be allowed to participate with our patients in research, to try to find better ways to treat those that we serve. When we're doing research on individuals who are unconscious, as is the case in someone having a seizure, where time is absolutely of the essence to save their life and to preserve their brain function, it's critical for us to be able to work as partners with our elected officials, with our citizens, and to have our paramedics, our firefighters, our police officers, our first responders, be partners with everyone in the city, to be able to know with confidence that we have your support, to be part of projects such as this, to try to find better and quicker treatments. In this case, we had your support, as we always have. We don't take it lightly. It's absolutely critical to the work that we do, and it's critical to the future advancements that we continue to make year after year. So thank you, thank you, thank you to all of you, and a special thanks to all of our paramedics and firefighters and public safety folks, without whose actual day-to-day help this would never have been possible. So thank you all so much.
Steve and I are going to get you a better jacket.
Madam President, those are all of the awards and presentations for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, will we please review the list of amendments to tonight's agenda?
The amendments to tonight's agenda consist of, on the consent agenda, item number one, ordinance number 2012-200, which is continued to January the 14th, 2013. Item number four, ordinance number 2012-211, continued to January 14th. Item number five, ordinance number 2012-212, continued to January the 14th. Ordinance number, item number 14, resolution number 2012-R140, continued till Monday, December the 17th. Item number 15, resolution number 2012-R143, withdrawn. Item number 17, resolution number 2012-R148, amend and continue to January the 14th. And on the regular agenda, item number 20, ordinance number 2012-29, continued till January the 14th. And item number 21, ordinance number 2012-168, amend and continue till January the 14th.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Does any member of council have additional amendments to tonight's agenda? I would like to submit an amendment on item number 14. That was the paper that Mr. Hilbert had a question about. Mr. Hilbert has communicated that he got the response that he was looking for, and that's that it would be about 100 students per middle school would be in that program. And so, Mr. Hilbert is, would like to suggest that we not continue this paper, but move it forward tonight. Number 14, that was the school paper on the Renaissance. Move forward with that. Okay, do we need a motion, Mr. Clerk?
Yes. We're removing item number 14 from that list I just read.
Correct. We'll hear that paper.
I need a motion to accept the amended agenda as presented.
So moved, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, we're voting on the amended agenda. Mr. Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert is absent. Madam Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Jewell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler?
Aye.
Madam President, Graziano?
Aye.
The amended agenda is before you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, are there any papers to moat that we need to amend and continue?
Yes, Madam President, we have two papers for consideration. One is item number 17, to direct the Green City Commission, I'm sorry, this is resolution number 2012-R148, and that paper is to direct the Green City Commission to recommend, in consultation with the Department of Procurement Services, to the city council any legislation, plans, policies, and programs imposing mandatory green standards for the construction of city-owned buildings and facilities with a cost of $5 million or less. The proposed amendment to that paper is as follows. Page 2, line 18, after the word "directed", insert the text "to study the city's existing ordinances, resolutions, policies, and procedures concerning the city's sustainability efforts, as well as any applicable legislation proposed in and enacted by the 2013 Session of the General Assembly of Virginia and..." I will need an amendment, I'm sorry, a motion to accept the amendment to that paper as read. Mr. Tyler, will you make that motion?
So moved.
Counsel is voting on Mr. Tyler's motion to accept the amendment as read for Resolution 2012-R148, and to continue that paper to January 14th. Mr. Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Jewell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler?
Aye.
President Graziano?
Aye.
That paper has been amended and will be before you again on January the 13th, 14th. Next, item number 21, which is ordinance number 2012-168, that's to amend ordinance number 2001-308-305, for the purpose of a museum for architecture with indoor events, a reception facility, an out-of-print book dealer, and a lodging unit to authorize the expansion of the number of types of permitted events upon certain terms and conditions. The proposed amendment to that paper is as follows. Page 6, line 16, after the word "available", insert the phrase "a copy of the contract for each reception event and a copy of the Virginia Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control License issued specifically for each event when alcohol is served." I will need a motion to accept the amendment. Mr. Samuels, will you make that motion?
So moved.
Counsel is voting on Councilman Samuel's motion to accept the amendment to item number 21, ordinance 2012-168, as read. Mr. Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Jewell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler?
Aye.
President Graziano?
Aye.
That paper has been amended and will be before you again on January 14th.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
again on January fourteenth.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Clerk, at this, at this time, do you please call the list of speakers for the citizen comment period?
Okay, our first speaker is Shelby Dolan. Our next speaker is Stanley Berkowitz.
My name is Stanley Berkowitz and I'm a retired Richmond public school teacher and I live at nineteen oh six West Main Street, where I've lived for the last twenty-five years. I've come to the council to ask for some help because I have a problem with the noise level from a bar across the street by the name of Martini Kitchen and Bubble Bar. When I moved in twenty-five years ago, there was a grocery store across the street and then it was converted into a restaurant and now it is a restaurant bar that plays live music about five days of the week. And the noise level is very high and disturbing and I had to move my bedroom from the front room to the back room to be able to sleep and even still, the bass is so loud that I can hear it back there and I was just trying to get some help with this problem. That's why I was here.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, sir. Mr. Samuels?
At the risk of surprising him, Mark Olinger, the Director of Planning and Development for the city, is in the auditorium today. He's got his hand raised back there. Um, I bet he would be willing to talk to you about this.
Okay, thank you.
Sure thing.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels.
Our next speaker is Baron Godley.
Hello.
Good evening.
Uh, good evening to Ms. Kathy Mariano, um, my buddy over here, Mr. Jewell, Marty Jewell and other council members. Uh, this is part of my holiday package for the city to save y'all a lot of money. Right now, y'all dealing with an issue with, um, packages for employee, city workers.
Sir, excuse me one second, but, but this public citizen comment time, this is not a time to promote somebody's business.
Well--
It's like you are getting ready to promote a business and that is not something, according to our rules, that can be done during the public comment period.
Well, it's not a business. I'm trying to save y'all money and so--
It's, [laugh] and that's not some, sir, that's not something that we deal with at this time. If you have a proposal for the city, then you can bring it to administration. Lila Jefferson is over there. She works with the mayor, with administration and, and she would be the person to contact to find out to whom you, um, inform of this offer that you have.
All right, 'cause I mean, I was notified dealing this previously, but it's not a business.
It's not, we, you can, if you have something that needs to be purchased, we, this is not the time to bring it to council.
All right.
We cannot purchase, we don't purchase anyway. So, we have procurement, they do the purchasing and Ms. Jefferson is the person who can get you to the right people to make this offer.
Okay.
Okay? I'm sorry.
Our next speaker is Ralph White.
Madam Chairman, uh, and members of council, I'm here to say thank you for all that you have done for the James River Park, for the awards and recognition that you've given to park staff and to me, and also for the money that enabled us to not only serve three-quarters of a million people a year, but also develop the nation's finest urban mountain biking trails. Um, I'm a citizen, a resident of Richmond and I'm a city employee and I am very grateful for all that you have done. Uh, I will be retiring at the end of this month and so I would like to also say goodbye.
And on behalf of council, Ralph, we would like to thank you for all you have done for this city and for our park system and we also want to thank Cricket for putting up with all the many long hours that you have not been home because you've been cutting trees, you're trimming hedges or all the various, I'm not gonna go into it all, but all the various things you do and we want to thank you very, very much. You have been invaluable to the city. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Madam President, our last speaker is Mr. Henry McLaughlin.
I want to thank President Graziano for letting me speak. I was procrastinated and called afternoon today and they told me that the president has a discretion to allow me and I thank you very much. I'm Henry McLaughlin. I live at thirty-five oh four Hermitage Road. I'm a constituent of Councilman Samuels. Does such a terrific job as my councilman. I'm here to, uh, speak about Councilman Jewell and the work that he has done, um, and as such a tremendous servant of the people. I was at legal aid for thirty years and during most of that time, not a month would go by that I wouldn't get a telephone call from Marty Jewell and he would say, "There's this family." And he would speak about someone, a family, a group, a, a father, a mother or a child who had fallen between the slats. And usually it had to do with something that, he didn't only want help from legal aid, but he was asking other people to, to help or some other agency and it would be a group effort to do something for someone. And this, this family that fell between the slats, through cooperative effort, something could be done and something was done and there were many untold happy endings because of his intervention. It was one ti-- during the, the very, very cold nights when homeless people, um, through the generosity of this council have, and the people, have places to go, the overnight, the overflow shelters, there are, uh, some people out in the cold who didn't get the word or have trouble accessing services. And Councilman Jewell would organize sort of pickup groups, ad hoc groups, to go around the city and find these people. This is not some official action. It wasn't, there was no funding involved. He would go and he would get other people to go, some of whom were homeless advocates, some of whom were homeless themselves and go and find people who were out shivering in the cold. You know, people don't freeze to death who are homeless. That's not the way it happens. What happens is if they are overnight in subs, sub-freezing temperatures, that, um, their resistance goes down and they're subject to really serious illnesses and later real problems. So, you don't hear about somebody freezing on the street, but it is a real problem for people when they're out there and don't have anybody and don't have a place to go. Not that the place is unavailable, but some sort of lack of communication or they're having trouble accessing services. And Marty went out and with other people and got that done. And for many years, when the late Alma Marie Barlow was the executive president of the Richmond Tennis Organization, Marty was on the board and was always there advocating for those who had nobody else to advocate for. And he's a true friend of those who are powerless and he's done a tremendous work for the people. Thank you.
Madam President, I wasn't looking for that. Henry McLaughlin has been my friend for many, many years. Um, I, I, uh, it would take too much time to tell you about what this guy's done for, for those who qualify, um, as low-income clients for legal aid, uh, all hours of night. But I, I wasn't looking for that. Thank you, Henry, very, very much. Um, but, uh, he knows my passion and he caught me off guard and I'm gonna shut up right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jewell. And Mr. Jewell, before we go to the consent agenda, I believe that all of the committee meetings for this month have been canceled with the exception of governmental ops. Are you holding your meeting on December twenty-seventh?
Why not? We have the special meetings.
Madam President, I'm, I'm not aware of anything that's pressing. Um, we have follow-ups on audits and we will continue, I suspect, to follow up on audits even in my absence. So, uh, I don't think anything that I'm aware of that's pressing so that we can, Gary, you don't play.
So, you would be canceling the meeting?
I, I would think so, yes.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Jewell. Actually, your committee members, thank you too. Uh, with that, uh, Mr. Clerk, could we please have, um, the consent agenda?
Madam President, the consent agenda consists of the following items. Item number two, ordinance number two thousand twelve two oh nine, to amend chapter thirty-eight, article four of the city code by adding a new section thirty-eight dash one fifty-four point one concerning unlawful nuisances for the purpose of declaring certain unsanitary or unsafe conditions to be nuisances and prohibiting persons who own or occupy property from allowing such nuisances to exist on such property. Item number three, ordinance number two thousand twelve two-ten, to authorize the CAO to accept thirty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty dollars from the Institute of Museum and Laboratory Services and to appropriate the increase to the fiscal year twelve thirteen special fund budget by increasing estimated revenues and the amount appropriated to the laboratory by thirty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty dollars for the purpose of providing summer programs to reduce summer learning loss. Item number six, ordinance number two thousand twelve two-twenty-one, to declare a public necessity for and to authorize the acquisition of real property known as eighteen oh one Commerce Road for the purpose of housing the Department of Public Utilities Water and Waste Water Plant Laboratory Operations, Stormwater Operations and Waste Water Collections Field Operations. Item number seven, ordinance number two thousand twelve two-twenty-two, to amend ordinance number two thousand twelve thirty-four seventy, adopted May fourteen, two thousand twelve, to amend the fiscal year twelve thirteen capital budget by transferring funds in the amount of two million five hundred fifty-one thousand three hundred dollars from the wastewater treatment project in the utilities category and appropriating four hundred and sixty thousand eight hundred fifty dollars of the transferred funds to the sanitary sewer project in the utilitaries, utilities category, one million four hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred dollars of the transferred funds to the major plant and pumping improvements project in the utilities category and six hundred and seventy thousand seven hundred fifty dollars to the stormwater facilities improvements project in the utilities category for the purpose of providing funds for the acquisition of eighteen oh one Commerce Road to enable the relocation of the Department of Public Utilities Water and Waste Water Plant Laboratory Operations, Stormwater Operations and Waste Water Collections Field Operations. Item number eight, ordinance number two thousand twelve two-twenty-four, to authorize the CAO to accept funds in the amount of thirty-three thousand six hundred dollars from the Federal Emergency Management Agency to transfer eight thousand four hundred dollars in matching funds from the fiscal year twelve thirteen general fund budget by an emergency services account via administration program and to appropriate the total amount of forty-two thousand to the fiscal year twelve thirteen special fund budget by increasing estimated revenues and the amount appropriated to the Department of Fire and Emergency Services by forty-two thousand dollars for the purpose of procuring dual sensor smoke detectors for installation in homes in Richmond. Item number nine, ordinance number two thousand twelve two-twenty-five, to authorize the CAO to accept one hundred and seventy-six thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation and to appropriate the increase to the fiscal year twelve thirteen stormwater utility budget by increasing estimated revenues and the amount appropriated to the stormwater utility by one hundred and seventy-six thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars for the purpose of demonstrating how city and community partners can implement new approaches to restoring urban habitats that benefit water quality, fish and wildlife and community health and well-being. Item number ten, ordinance number two thousand twelve two-twenty-seven, to authorize the CAO on behalf of the city to execute a grant contract between the city of Richmond and Richmond Two Thousand Fifteen, Inc., for the purpose of making a gift of five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollars to Richmond Two Thousand Five, Inc. to defray a portion of the cost of preparations for the two thousand fifteen Union Cyclists Internationale Road World Championships to be held from September nineteen, two thousand fifteen through September twenty-seven, two thousand fifteen in the city. Item number eleven, ordinance number two thousand twelve two-twenty-eight, to transfer funds in the amounts of eight hundred thousand dollars from the Department of Public Works Agency and one million nine hundred thousand dollars from the debt agency, general fund transfer to debt service program in the fiscal year twelve thirteen general fund budget, to amend the fiscal year twelve thirteen debt service fund budget by reducing budgeted expenditures in the amount of one million nine hundred thousand dollars within the long-term debt principal and interest program and to amend the fiscal year twelve thirteen capital budget by appropriating such transferred funds in the total amount of two million seven hundred thousand to the Boulevard Redevelopment Preparation Project and the Economic and Community Development Category for the purpose of acquiring real property at fifteen oh one Commerce Road for the relocation of Facility Management Services of Richmond Public Schools from locations owned by the city along the boulevard. Item number twelve, ordinance number two thousand twelve two-twenty-nine, to declare a public necessity for and to authorize the acquisition of a seven-point-nine acre portion of the real property known as fifteen oh one Commerce Road for the purpose of housing Facility Management Services for Richmond Public Schools. Item number thirteen, ordinance number two thousand twelve two-thirty, to amend ordinance number two thousand twelve dash two fourteen dash one ninety-two, adopted November twenty-six, two thousand twelve, which declared surplus and directed the conveyance of the property located at fifty-eight hundred Patterson Avenue to the Economic Development Authority of the city of Richmond for nominal consideration for purposes of the development of the property as an authority facility, facility as defined by Virginia Code, section fifteen point two dash forty-nine oh two, for the purpose of modifying the terms and conditions of the conveyance. Item fourteen, resolution number two thousand twelve R one forty, to approve in accordance with ordinance number two thousand twelve dash thirty-five dash fifty, adopted May fourteen, the written program outline and budget with projected outcomes for the middle school Renaissance program and to authorize the expenditure of three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars from the Innovation and Excellence in Education Special Fund to Richmond Public Schools Education Foundation. Item number sixteen, resolution number two thousand twelve R one forty-seven, to endorse its priorities for the city, the legislative proposals set forth in the document entitled VACSB Services and Budget Priorities, two thousand thirteen fourteen, and request that the Richmond delegation to the General Assembly of Virginia take legislative action consistent with and in vigorous support of the priorities and to encourage others to pu-- support these proposals. Item number eighteen, resolution number two thousand twelve R one fifty, to amend resolution number ninety-two R three fifty-eight ninety-three dash two, adopted January eleven, nineteen ninety-three, as previously amended by resolution number ninety-six R one eighty-one dash one sixty-four, adopted November eleven, nineteen ninety-six, and resolution number two thousand eleven R one thirty-three dash one twenty-nine, adopted October twenty-fourth, two thousand eleven, concerning the establishment of the community policy and management team for the purpose of providing for the requirement that certain members file statements of economic interest as set forth in Virginia Code, section two point two dash forty, fifty-two oh five. Item number nineteen, resolution number two thousand twelve R one fifty-two, to dispense with the December twenty-six, two thousand twelve regularly scheduled meeting of council. This completes this consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there persons in the audience who wish to speak in opposition to any of these papers?
My name is Chris Dorsey. I'm speaking in opposition to everything this body does. The consent agenda, again, is full of language that people don't understand and it's bundled legislation that's bad for people that, you know, is just voted without any real consideration or even people understanding at all what the legislation is. But what drives all this is the Economic Development Authority, which consists of representatives that own this council from the Federal Reserve Bank, which is the treasonous and unconstitutional institution that controls everything this government does. Dominion Power, we're talking about the river. The river is filthy and polluted. And the biggest polluter in the Commonwealth of Virginia is another representative on the Economic Development Authority, and that's Dominion Power, which has its headquarters here. They have, you know, tritium leaking from a damaged, earthquake-damaged nuclear power plant. They spew all sorts of coal runoff and other pollutants and toxins into our water. And then I see that there is legislation about wastewater and the water treatment facilities. And first of all, I would like to demand that this body stop putting an industrial waste product known as fluoride into the water. It's not anything that's going to help your teeth. It's poison. But, you know, the Fed and Dominion Power and representatives from the lobbying firms downtown that control the state legislator, like Williams and Mullen and McGuire Woods, they all direct these things and they make money hand over fist every step of the way when they're carrying this out. It is theft to move forward with that West Hampton School project. I don't really want more obnoxious, loud construction noise in the neighborhood and a worse footprint couldn't be left by any company other than St. Mary's and Bonsacor's. They stole from the city and so did the Redskins and Dan Snyder. You know, we'll be locked up when the people get in control of the jails because we don't really care who won the game yesterday. And finally, I'd like to say that any mention of Virginia Code 2.2 in this room is so ironic and ridiculous. I can't even believe people had the guts to bring this up. Alan Jackson over there, he's guilty in covering up massive balloting and election fraud engaged on behalf of the city.
We're not going to...
No, I'm talking. I still have nine seconds. You're out of order. You're out of order.
No, 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 no.
No, no, no. I'm making statements of fact.
Do you want it off? We are not going... The rules of council were read to you. You will not speak about individual people sitting up here. Thank you.
I have statements of fact. You are criminal danger and I have allegations of criminal danger.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I have statements of fact. Judge Yimmy.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Silver Persinger. I'm a citizen of Richmond, Virginia. There's a couple items I'd like to speak in opposition to. Item number one and number thirteen... Not number one, number two and number 13. Number one is adding nuisances to our city code. You're going to add bats, rodents, insects, arachnids, vermin, including not limited to rats, mice, bees, flies, fleas, cockroaches, bedbugs, spiders, ants, silverfish, termites, and powder post beetles. Mrs. Robertson asked a good question during the informal session. She asked, "What's the penalty?" Because as this ordinance says under Section 2, "It shall be unlawful for any person who owns or occupies property within the city to permit a nuisance as set forth in subsection A of this section to exist on such property." As you all know, within the last year, in order to clean up the code, you made it be a first-degree misdemeanor where items aren't defined. You know, you could make this a fourth-degree misdemeanor, which carries a much shorter or a smaller penalty. I think it's just only a monetary penalty for a fourth-degree misdemeanor. First-degree misdemeanor, if you have cockroaches, mice, you could face a year in jail, a $1,500 fine. That's what you're passing right here. You know, I don't think this has really been vetted very properly. You know, when you guys review papers, you really just look at them for five minutes and then they're sent here for you guys to vote on every two weeks. You know, this was considered an organizational development where I did not have the opportunity to comment because you don't allow comment at the organizational development meeting. I think that's a problem. You know, that's the only committee meeting where the majority of council members appear. And wouldn't it be great if citizens could talk to you guys offline, not at one of these formal meetings, in a committee environment? Or you guys shoot yourself in the foot. You also hold that meeting before 5:00, when the majority of people that live in the city are at work. Number 13, that's the Bonsacor's Redskins giveaway. You know, it's a ripoff. You're giving this school to Bonsacor's to use for 60 years. I appreciate the city retaining ownership of the property. I disagree that the lease is too long. I think it's the longest lease that the city has with any private entity in the city. I think that's a dangerous precedent for us to have for economic development. You know, I object to building a $9 million stadium for a billionaire, Daniel Snyder, the owner of the Redskins. He can build his own training stadium. Why is the city doing it? I heard that there are no reports that show a long-term economic impact from or benefit from sports events. I don't think this is a policy we pursue. The Commonwealth of Virginia has already given the Redskins $4 million. Why don't they kick some of that down to us to build their stupid training field? Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chairman, members of council, my name is Amy Swartz, Director of Preservation at Historic Richmond Foundation. Historic Richmond Foundation advocates for the protection of the architectural treasures of the city, and I'm here to talk about West Hampton School and its protection. We appreciate your inclusion of Historic Richmond in the process of the rehabilitation of West Hampton School and have already had a meeting with Bonsacor's and their consultants. HRF strongly requests that before any bids are accepted, that the city transfers West Hampton School with strong conditions, that an adaptive reuse of the building be a part of the deal with appropriate infill additions behind and around it to obtain necessary square footage. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes, sir. Mr. Jewell.
Ask the nice lady if she...
I believe Mr. Jewell has a question.
As you mentioned, Historic Richmond Foundation was considered to be a part of this arrangement?
Yes.
Have you had any indication that you would not be welcome to the table?
Not at this time, no. We've been welcomed by Bonsacor's. We've had a meeting. We have another on the calendar for this week. So things are progressing in a way that we are pleased.
Oh, good. That's all I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of any of these papers? Okay, back to council for discussion. Call the question, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel is voting on the consent agenda as presented with items 2, 3, 6 through 14, 16, 18, and 19. Mr. Samuels, would you be willing to make the motion?
Yes, so moved, Madam Clerk.
Counsel is voting on these items as presented in the consent agenda. Mr. Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Madam Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Jewell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler?
Aye, with the exception of item number 12. I have a conflict of interest and cannot vote on it.
Madam President Graziano?
Aye.
The consent agenda has been adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I believe we have three expedited resolutions.
That is correct. Would you like all three of them done together?
Yes, let's do them together.
Resolution Number 2012-R155 is to terminate the services of Mary Ann G. Pitts as the council liaison for the City of Richmond. Resolution Number 2012-R156 is to terminate the services of Francine P. Young as a council liaison for the City of Richmond. And Resolution Number 2012-R157 is to terminate the services of Eli Haywong as a council liaison for the City of Richmond. I will need a motion for expedited consideration of those three papers as presented. Ms. Newbill, will you make that motion?
So moved, Madam Clerk.
Counsel is voting on Councilwoman Newbill's motion for expedited consideration of those three papers, Resolution 2012-R155, R156, and R157, as read. Mr. Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Jewell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler?
No.
President Graziano?
Aye.
Those papers are before you for consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to any of these papers?
My name is Chris Dorsey. I want to speak in opposition to the papers relieving, I guess, the council liaison from duty. First of all, in the First District, I don't think that there's been a clear result of a winner. I'm not sure why the sitting council member is having their liaison removed. I have presented evidence that has been covered up by city officials, that has been presented to Mr. Delal, who's the city auditor, showing that Mr. Beliles did not even properly qualify to be on the ballot, and there's been multiple court cases showing that the registrar violated Virginia Code Section 2.2. And those are Epps versus Showalter and Ryan versus Showalter. And we have a case, Harvey versus Showalter, where we show not, you know, every council liaison that's being considered to be removed, that there were so many anomalies and violations of state and federal law that the elections are completely invalid. For example, in the Ninth District, there was an entire precinct that didn't report at all by the deadline, meaning Precinct 910 reported zero votes by the deadline, and that's because of no explanation given. But and that, you know, in the Fifth District, it's been shown that Parker Agulhas, though, did not properly qualify for the ballot and that somehow the registrar, Kirk Showalter, just pushed it along. And Section 2.2, I like Marty, but Marty didn't qualify because Marty had so many outstanding debts to pay that he couldn't properly run. So all these things have been presented to a federal judge and to other judges, and actually, this is the... There have been four judges that have been looking into what's leading up to getting rid of all of these council liaisons. And what people see is that the State Board and the Richmond Registrar and the Electoral Board, they didn't do anything that they were supposed to do. They didn't follow the law at all when it comes to the elections. And we really can't have a proper election when there's so many anomalies and people who don't belong on the ballot. I mean, Mr. Connor, he doesn't belong on the ballot. He put down two different addresses on his petition ballots. That's a violation of the rules. But everyone did this. I'm just saying, what I'm saying is, the election is fraudulent. I'm speaking on a paper in which a council liaison is about to be dismissed, and there isn't really a properly clarified winner because of all of these anomalies and violations of law engaged in by council and Alan Jackson and Showalter and the Richmond Electoral Board, Cecilia Dabney, you know, Bill Thomas, et cetera. I mean, that's it. That's it. People look into it.
Thank you.
It's the law. The elections are a fraud.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes, sir, ma'am.
There's only one thing I would agree with what Chris just said. In District 1.
Correct.
How come Mary Ann, when it's being said that this election is still in the courts or whatever, or it's not, we still...
I'm going to let Mr. Jackson... I'm going to let Mr. Jackson answer it.
Okay, I think I asked that question, so...
Madam President, at this point, the status of the election, as I understand it, is that the Electoral Board has published a statement of results and is subject to both a recount petition as well as a potential contest. It is expected that those proceedings will be concluded before the effective date of these terminations, such that at council's organizational meeting on January 20th, or January 2nd, if appropriate, any one or more of these could be repealed and the employment of the individuals continued.
So you're saying that even though this is tied up in the courts right now, who's to say it's not going to go to a higher court or whatever? Who's to say we're going to even know who the winner is, per se, by the 2nd of January? So that what I'm asking, why do we have, you know, her name on here from the First District when this thing is still tied up in the courts? And, you know, I don't know if you know something that we don't know as far as why this is... Her name cannot be removed from the paper.
I can only speak to the...
I can't hear you, Alan.
I'm sorry. I can only speak to the status of the legal proceedings at this point, Ms. Trammell. With respect to the recount petition, which is scheduled to be heard on December 19th, it's my understanding that there is no appeal from the decision of the court. In terms of the contest, what I understand is that the proceedings there are entitled to highly expedited review, and I would expect that those proceedings, the hearing on those proceedings would be set, in the words of the statute, as soon as possible. And I would expect that to happen before January 1, which is when the term of office is supposed to begin. Hasn't been done yet, but that's the expectation. As I indicated earlier, if council wishes to take alternative action on January 2, it would be free to do so.
Which means? If the recount changes the outcome, or if the contested, Mr. Tyler has contested the election, if the courts determine that Mr. Tyler should be sitting in that seat on January 2, we're going to have a meeting to, for reorganization and to get sworn in. At that time, this paper can be removed, and Ms. Pitts will just go on her way, just the way she is. But because we're going to change this so this doesn't happen, again, because all of council appoints liaisons, then all of council, when a sitting member is no longer in that seat, then all of council has to, in effect, terminate that liaison. That's the way our rules are written. We're going to try to change some of that so we don't get ourselves in this position again.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
While I understand procedurally what's going on here, what Mr. Dorsey had to say, much of it was a bunch of hooey. But one thing did resonate with me, and I think we all have to come to terms with, and that is that this was the sloppiest handling of an election I've ever seen in my life. And that we will have to, if this council doesn't, certainly the citizens may, raise this issue with regards to not only what happened, but the way it happened and the fact that, I don't know, an agency and state or city government in which there is no appeal. Never seen that before. We've got an electoral board that appeared to have been run by the registrar. And this is not to disparage her personally, but I've just never... I've been hopelessly political all my life. I've just never seen anything this poorly handled, in which two court cases wound up being reversed, suggesting that they were totally out of order. And so we need to look at this, and I commend it to this council going forward that perhaps we may address it going down the road real soon.
Thank you, Mr. Jewell. Thank you, Mr. Jewell. Back to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience to speak in favor of any of these papers? Okay. Back to, back to council for discussion? Call the question, Madam Clark.
Council is voting on Resolution Number 2012-R, 155, R. 156, and R. 157. Mr. Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert? I'm sorry. Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Jewell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
No for Ms. Pitts, and aye for the other two.
Mr. Tyler?
No for Mrs. Pitts, and aye for the other two.
President Graziano?
Aye.
Those papers have been adopted.
Okay, at this time, we have the approval of the minutes.
The minutes to be approved are from the November 26, 2012 informal meeting, the November 26, 2012 formal meeting, and the December 3, 2012 special meeting. Mr. Connor, would you be willing to make a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved, Madam Clark.
Counsel is voting on Councilmember Connor's motion to approve the minutes as presented. Mr. Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Madam Vice President Robertson? Aye. Mr. Jewell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler?
Aye.
Madam President Graziano?
Aye.
Motion has been approved.
Thank you, Madam Clark. Before we go to reports and announcements, I'd like to just point out a couple of things, both to my fellow council members and to the public. In the introduction papers today, we have a second paper coming in that deals with the Redskins Bon Secours ordinance. It's an amendment to that. We are going to have, just so everybody is on top of it, we're going to have a special meeting on December 17th at 12:30 to consider that paper. At that time, at that special meeting, there will be another paper introduced that deals with the Redskins Bon Secours transaction. It was the will of council that all of these papers be passed before December 31st. So there will be a second special meeting, and people may wear Santa Claus hats to this, on December 27th at 12:30 to pass the paper that's going to be introduced next week. Okay? Any questions on that? Everybody okay with that? Yeah, okay. I just wanted to give everybody a heads up. 12:30, it would be December 17th at 12:30, and then December 27th at 12:30. And so maybe I'll bring some pasta. Okay, all right. Everybody's good? Okay. All right. Let's do reports and announcements. Mr. Connor?
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate being the first one out of the bag here. I'd like to say to my folks in the district that I certainly have enjoyed working with them the past six years. I've made so many new friends, just unbelievable. It's like a huge family, you know? And I want to let you know that I'm particularly proud of Millithian Turnpike, getting that finished up. That'll be completely finished here in early spring, and every time I ride down that road, I'll think about you all, for sure. I wanted to let you know that the Hull and Durwood intersection has been fully funded, and that project will start in early spring. That'll eliminate two extra stoplights down there and all the confusion and probably, I'll lose a little bit of business out of it as well, which is not good, but anyway, better for, safety for our citizens. The James River Branch Trail, the Rails Trails, the 2.3 linear miles of trail in South Richmond, now has been put into the city's master plan. The funding mechanism is in progress, so I look for that to be done in the next several years. So you all look out for that. That'll be coming along, and I'll be tracking that as well. The Manchester Bidwell Training Program, that's the program that we, that the council was kind enough to invest $150,000 on the replication process. That is a standalone program now, and we look to complete the study on it the next quarter. We should have, first of all, we should be able to identify a location, we should be able to select a director, and we should identify our funding partners as well. So that program's going along well. That's, to kind of jog your memory, that's the one that actually has the 300 kids per week after-school program, and then we'll be training between 100 and 150 adults that are on public assistance. That's what that program's all about, and I'm going to stick with that. That's a program that I'm very dedicated to, and I want to make sure that that happens. In addition to that, we talked about the Career and Technical Education Commission, and that I will stay with as well, with the blessing, of course, of the existing council. We talked several members on council, they're very supportive of keeping that going, so I'm really looking forward to moving that forward. That'll give me more time to focus on those two particular items. I would like to thank all the association leaders, because they have been so good to work with in the past six years in the district, and they are very, very important. People, I can't start thanking people individually, because there's just too many people to thank, but they have made this all very, very worthwhile. And I look forward to seeing them ongoing anyway. In addition to that, I would like to thank Southside Baptist Church. They have been partners that you would not believe. They have spearheaded all of our cleanups. They're like my right, right, right arm in all the things that we're doing, and I'm sure that that will continue, because that's the type of folks that Southside Baptist Ministries are. And in conclusion, basically, I would like to thank the administration. I've had a really good working relationship with them. DPW, DPU, those folks have always come to my aid in anything I've ever needed. And then finally, and last but not least, is the City Police Department. Those guys are heroes. I appreciate everything they do, and they are just as much a part of what we do as what we actually do. They're like your right arm. I've never seen such a, such a great bunch of guys, and I really appreciate what they do. So anyhow, I want to thank you all, and it's been good. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Mr. Samuels?
Nothing tonight, except a happy holidays to everybody. Please remember to be safe as you go to and from the various holiday parties, and please don't discharge your firearm straight up in the air.
Okay, Mr. Tyler?
Madam President, thank you. This Thursday at, let's see, this Thursday, December 13th, we're going to have one more GRT and Transit Study Task Force meeting at 4 o'clock at Main Street Station, third floor. Public is invited, and I look forward to seeing those folks that are interested in us transforming the GRTC. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler. Ms. Trammell?
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I'd like to say that Marty and Doug are definitely going to be missed, and because we're all like family, and I just wanted to say that they're going to definitely be missed. Our CAO, Mr. Marshall, was able to attain $42,000 for these. These are free smoke alarms. This will allow Richmond firefighters to come to your home and to continue to put these smoke alarms up for you, and also if your smoke alarm needs a battery, they can put one of these batteries in your smoke alarm. So all you've got to do is call 646-1526, that's 646-1526, and set up an appointment for the firefighters. The Richmond firefighters will come to your home in Richmond, not Chesterfield, not Hemarco, but in the city of Richmond, and they will install this for you, and they will also put the smoke alarm, a battery in your smoke alarm if you need one. So remember. Also, you can also go to the nearest fire station and tell the firefighters that you need your smoke alarm checked, and they will set up an appointment with you to come to your home and check your smoke alarm. Next Thursday, December 20th, at 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., we're going to have our eighth district meeting. That's the last eighth district meeting of 2012, and it's going to be held at the Satellite. Again, that is December 20th, or Thursday, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And our CAO, Mr. Marshall, will be attending that meeting, along with the Police Department, the Fire Department, and give us some information about our city and our district. So we thank Mr. Marshall. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trammell. Dr. Newbill?
Thank you, Miss, Madam President. Just a couple of quick announcements. I would like to invite all seven district residents to join the mayor and myself on this Wednesday, December 12th, for a community conversation and discussion about the biennial fiscal plan for FY 2014 and 2015, as well as the capital improvement programs and budgets and ongoing projects throughout the city and other issues impacting our communities. Again, this will be this Wednesday, December 12th, at George Mason Elementary School, located at 813 North 28th Street at 6:00 p.m. So please come out and share your thoughts, ideas, recommendations relative to the biennial fiscal plan for the upcoming biennial budget process. Second, I'd like to wish all Richmonders an absolutely happy, healthy, and very festive holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Newbill. Mr. Jewell?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President. First of all, just want to reiterate that we are not going to have Government Operations Committee this month, as per my colleagues' instruction. Secondly, I want to announce that we will have a fifth district meeting, holiday meet and greet at Southside Plaza on the 27th of December, after Christmas, believe it or not, at the Social Service Building, at 5:30. I, this is my last meeting, except for next Monday, and I just want to say to all of my colleagues how wonderful it's been to have worked with you all, notwithstanding our ups and downs, I have found utter respect for all of you. The, I commend to you, as I depart, that we play close heed to the best auditor in America, Mr. Delal, who has not missed a trick yet. I, I want to thank Mr. Marshall and all that he has done to accommodate, not only me, but the folks in my district. He's a straight shooter, and we appreciate him being here. The, I always believe that a politician is best measured by what they manifest that they are passionate about. What they manifest that they are passionate about. And I've seen y'all's passion, you know mine. Young people are my passion, divorceless are my passions. That's not going to change. I'm not going away. I'll be knocking on your doors, I'll be ringing your phones. I urge you to do the same. Use me. I ain't going far. There's a lot of work to do out here, and there are a lot of wonderful people in and out of the Fifth District who want to help. I've been really blessed to have wonderful civic leagues and civic leadership, and we'll continue to build and help them to grow their civic organizations in some, in some ways. So you haven't heard the last of me, and I look forward to serving in any way. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Jewell. Ms. Robertson?
Thank you, Madam President. Let me just start off first by saying I really have enjoyed the experience of working with both Mr. Jewels and Mr. Connors. You gentlemen have been a delight to work with. Sometimes we disagree on things, but I think for sure, both of you have quite a passion for the city of Richmond and for your district, and I feel that you've represented the city well, as well as your districts, and I wish you the best of success. We're happy that you're both interested and continuing to serve on boards and willing to be called upon to continue the work that needs to be done in the city, and I think it would be a disservice to the city if we didn't take advantage of that. The dedication of hours and service that is rendered by elected officials goes far beyond what people see on TV, and certainly, I want to thank you for your hours of dedication and service and the passion that you bring, and we want to continue to keep those passions alive. As far as meetings in the district, there will also be a meeting tomorrow night, Tuesday, as will be, as Dr. Newbill mentioned earlier on the 12th. We're also having a meeting Tuesday this week, December 11th, at the Franklin Street Library, in which the mayor and I will be there to listen to the citizens' input as it relates to the upcoming budget, both capital improvement budget, as well as the general fund budget. And the purpose of that meeting is to really hear from the citizens and get a clear understanding of what their priorities are, where they want to see their taxpayers' dollars spent. And I want to commend the administration for the survey that has been done to begin that process, and commend the administration and the council for going out to the prospective communities and continuing to listen to the citizens. So I want to encourage all the citizens of the Sixth District, and it's not just limited to the Sixth District. Citizens can come to any of these meetings, or as many of these meetings as they would like, but certainly, we are having them in respective areas to make it as convenient as we can for different sectors of the city. That meeting will be at the Franklin Library at 101 East Franklin Street, and there is a parking garage right across the street at the corner of Grace and Franklin, I think. Now, Grace and Second. That will be available for parking as well. In addition to that, I want to encourage the citizens that live in the North Highland Park community to be attentive to the meetings that are coming up soon as it relates to the continual development of the Dove Street development. I pass through there every day on my way back and forth from City Hall and all of the other running around that we do, and the development is moving forward. It actually looks like some houses are going to be coming up pretty soon, and we're working on a master plan to continue mapping out the rest of the site, and we are hopeful that as we move through this process, that the citizens will stay engaged, and if there are any challenges that come up as a result of the development, that they would please make sure that they contact the city and myself and let us know how we can be assistance in the process. And I want to thank the administration and their staff for the many, many meetings that we've had and the continual effort that we continue to work through, and I'm confident that at the end of the day, we'll be very pleased with the end product that we're doing in North Highland Park and redevelopment of the community. And Merry Christmas to everyone, and look forward to seeing you all the first of the year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson. Again, I want to remind the council members, a special meeting, December 17th at 12:30, December 27th at 12:30. And I'd just like to say a couple of words to our departing members, Mr. Connor and Mr. Jewell. A lot has been said about family, a lot has been said about team. At the end of the day, we are losing two very valuable members of this council, and it's a loss to this council, both of you. Everybody brings, as Marty said earlier, everybody brings their own thing to counsel, and Mr. Jewels- and Mr. Jewell's perspective, Mr. Connor's perspective, bring more information and depth to the entire council, and we're really going to miss you. I'm going to miss you a lot. So, good luck, and though you'll be up here all the time, but good luck to both of you, and thank you for your service to the city. Thank you very much. I also would like to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And everybody have a safe holiday. Don't eat too much, don't drink too much, and just have a good, safe holiday. All right, with that, Madam Clerk, could we have the introduction of the papers?
Yes. New legislation for this evening is as follows. Ordinance Number 2012-231 to amend Ordinance Number 2012-156-125, which establishes an Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board for the purpose of adding a member of the city council as a non-voting chairman of the board. Council's Governmental Operations Standing Committee, January 24. Council's public hearing date, January 28. Ordinance Number 2012-231, to amend the city code by adding a new section for the purpose of making it unlawful for any person to attach a bicycle, motorcycle, or moped to a city-owned tree, and to amend the city code concerning the impoundment of bicycles for the purpose of authorizing police officers to impound bicycles, mopeds, or motorcycles, which for a period of more than 72 consecutive hours have been attached to city-owned trees, posts, signs, or other property owned by the city. Council's Public Safety Standing Committee, January 22. Council's public hearing date, January 28. Ordinance Number 2012-233, to erect always-stop signs at the intersection of North Shepherd Street and Stewart Avenue. Council's Land Use, Housing, and Transportation Standing Committee, January 22. Council's public hearing date, January 28. Ordinance Number 2012-234, to amend the city code for the purpose of defining and regulating by conditional use permit nightclub uses in certain zoning districts. Council's Planning Commission, January 7. Council's public hearing date, January 14. Ordinance Number 2012-235, to amend Ordinance Number 2012-215-194, for the purpose of modifying provisions of the cooperation agreement that the CAO will be authorized to execute. Council's public hearing date, January 17. December 17. And Resolution Number 2012-R158, to approve an expenditure in the amount of $1,500 from the council district funds for the second district to pay the Department of Information Technology for the printing and mailing of a newsletter to second district residents. Council's public hearing date, January 14. Madam President, that is all the new legislation that I have this evening.
Once again, Merry Christmas. This meeting is adjourned.
A little under two hours tonight with our final regularly scheduled general meeting of 2012 calendar year, and also the final meeting as council members, at least right for now, of Marty Jewell and Doug Connor. Councilmember Tyler, that one, there will be a recount going on the 19th of December, so that is one we'll have to wait and see on. But anyhow, we got called to order at 6:12 this evening. Councilman Hilbert, it was absent. We got the awards and presentations, the agenda review. There were no items left on the regular agenda. One was continued, one was amended and continued. Got the citizens' comment period at 6:55, and 10 minutes later, we were into the consent agenda. That took about 20 minutes before that was approved. Then we had three expeditive resolutions. Now, those were terminating the services of three liaisons, and those were from the council members who will be leaving the council. However, there was a question about Councilwoman Tyler's liaison and the way it has been explained, the legal way they'll do it. This paper, because they will be swearing in the new council members on the 2nd of January, if Mr. Tyler should be deemed that he did indeed win reelection, then they will void that particular paper, and Ms. Pitts will remain as council liaison for Mr. Tyler. However, that is something we just have to wait and see how that's going to happen. Got the approval of minutes, the reports, announcements, and the President Graziano did announce that there are going to be two special meetings. We will not be covering those, but they'll be very brief concerning the Redskins papers. One will be on Monday, the 17th, at 12:30. The next one will be on the 27th of December at 12:30. This is so they can get all the Redskins information, all that taken care of before December 31. Then we had the introduction of papers, and then we adjourned. So we are done for the night and for calendar 2012. I want to wish the best of luck to those who will not be coming back. Also, President Graziano has said that she will be stepping down as president at the end of the year, so we will have a new council president. Who will that be? We don't know. We'll just have to wait. They'll be deciding that and holding their election of who will be president and vice president on January 2 at the meeting when they organize for the coming calendar year. So we will look forward to seeing what happens at that time. So that's going to wrap it up for us and for this year. Calendar year will be back again next year. It sounds like a long ways away, but it'll be January 14, our next regularly scheduled meeting. I want to take this time to say to all my friends, be it Hanukkah, Christmas, or Kwanzaa, may they be joyful, may they be meaningful, and may you keep yourselves safe throughout the time. And also, New Year's coming up. Remember, don't drink and drive, because we want to see you alive, and we want you to have a very joyous and safe holiday season. So we look forward to seeing you again next year, and for gavel to gavel, I'm Dick Harmon saying goodnight.